There he is. Okay, are we ready to go? Okay, I'll call the September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of the Mill Creek City Council to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor Cavallari, please. Roll call, please.
Mayor Holtzclaw.
Here.
Mayor Protem Benio.
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Here.
Councilmember Steckler.
Here.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Councilmember Duque.
Here.
And Councilmember Paddock.
Present.
Before we get to audience communication, can we make a little adjustment to the agenda? We're on the clock with a photographer and we have some proclamations and presentations that we'd like him here for. So if it's okay, can we do audience communication after the presentations? Does that work for everyone? No objection? Okay. With that, we'll move on to our presentations. The first one is a proclamation in honor of the city's fortieth anniversary, which is this weekend. We had a great ceremony just before this. Help yourself to some more bund cakes and snacks when you have a chance of great food and thank you to staff for organizing it. So I will read the following proclamation of the city of Mill Creek. Whereas the city of Mill Creek officially incorporated on September thirty, nineteen eighty-three. And whereas since incorporating, it has expanded from one point eight miles, square miles with approximately three thousand five hundred residents to four point six eight miles with more than twenty-one thousand residents. And whereas Mill Creek is grateful for the service of former mayors Hanson, Long, Eppli, Pruitt, Austin, Nielsen, Hodge, Ryan, Michelson, Ryan, Todd, Pruitt, and myself, as well as the tireless dedication of each council member who worked alongside each of them. And whereas Mill Creek supports eleven city parks, miles of trails, a variety of shops and restaurants, and abundant community events, all providing opportunities to foster community spirit in support of our vision. And whereas the city's vision is to provide an exceptional community experience that brings people together. A city where people are safe, natural beauty is preserved, neighborhoods flourish, businesses thrive, and recreational opportunities abound. And whereas the commemorative events and anniversaries contribute to community pride. Celebrating the fortieth anniversary of incorporation provides an opportunity to both acknowledge Mill Creek's history and inspire a vision for our future. And now therefore I Brian Holtzclaw, the mayor of the city of Mill Creek, on behalf of the city council, to hereby ask all Mill Creek community members to join together to celebrate and proclaim September twenty-twenty-three as the Mill Creek fortieth anniversary of incorporation. And with that, we have a couple more proclamations to honor a few people. And just a couple of brief words, we're doing this now because the two council members we're gonna, former council members we're gonna recognize left the council during COVID. And normally when some council, we have a little pomp and circumstance of proclamation and opportunity for everyone to say a word. And we never had that with these two individuals. So that's why we're taking the opportunity tonight to recognize them. Do we have an order in the agenda? So first, I will read a proclamation and then everyone will have a chance like to say a few words. We're first going to recognize Mike Todd. So this is a proclamation to the city of Mill Creek. As Mike Todd, a Mill Creek resident since nineteen eighty-three, has dedicated decades of service and volunteerism to the city. And whereas he served as mayor from two thousand ten to two thousand fourteen. And whereas he served on the city council for fifteen years from two thousand five to two thousand twenty. And whereas he became the city of Mill Creek's director of public works and development services in two thousand twenty. And whereas he served several years on the Snohomish County City's Executive Board and more than ten years on the Board of Directors for Community Transit. And whereas he served on the Everett School District Capital Facilities Advisory Committee, the AWC Education Advisory Committee, and on both the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board and Operations Committees. And whereas he currently serves on the South County Fire Board of Commissioners. And whereas he helped in reestablishing a Mill Creek instance of the American Cancer Society Relay for Life, was instrumental member of the core group that founded the Mill Creek Food Bank and served as a board member for the Mill Creek Business Association, now the Mill Creek Chamber of Commerce. And now therefore I Brian Holtzclaw, the mayor of the city of Mill Creek, on behalf of the members of the city council and the citizens of the community, to hereby thank you and honor you for your service to our great city. I'll just say, yeah. Yeah, I'll just start by saying I, I sat where Councilmember Allison is sitting and I had the privilege of sitting on my left, Councilmember Todd, and on my right, Councilmember Michelson. So fifteen years on one side and nineteen years on the, on the other. I had a lot of experience surrounding me. And the one thing I really appreciated with Mike is I knew that if I was never able to get to the materials in the depth that I needed to or felt I should have. I knew that Mike would. His attention to detail was phenomenal. It still is, and it was a big benefit to the residents. He helped keep, keep, kept our eye on the ball fiscally and with everything and the history he brings. It was a good and bad when he decided to step away from the council because we lost him, but we didn't really lose him. We lost him on the council and the benefit he provided to the elected officials and the decisions we make. But he's, I think, has been a big help to the staff and with the institutional knowledge he brings. And I want to just thank you for all you've done for the city over the years. So that anyone else like to say a word? Councilmember Duque.
I met Director Todd the first time when I was volunteering on the communications website focus group. And it was, it was interesting and it was a lot, but I, I met someone who was very passionate about his work and I always appreciated what he would say when I would come to city council meetings as a resident to, to voice my concerns or to just listen in. And I'm very honored that I'm in position six in his seat. And I hope to continue to be as passionate as, you know, I co-coach my kid's soccer team and all those things. And now I'm, you know, volunteering with the chamber. So I appreciate the legacy and I hope to continue that.
Councilmember Paddock.
So I shared this with Director Todd earlier, but so now I can share it with everyone else. I was at an event in Edmonds, very much out of context. And one of the individuals that was there came up to me and said, I understand you're on the Mill Creek City Council. Yes, yes, I am, waiting to some sort of backhanded compliment or something like that. And she said, you know, when we were running the Everett School District, we just loved that Mayor Todd. He was so impactful and so communicative and helped us so much. We didn't always agree, but we always knew where we stood. And Mary Waggoner was the other name. Thank you. It was nowhere near Maggie. Mary Waggoner was her name. And I also want to thank Mike, Director Todd, as the junior member, I know it doesn't look like it, but as the junior member of the city council, I've gone to Mike for a number of, of coaching sessions and, and asks for help. And it's always been fantastic. Usually it's a response like, well, I don't know about that, but what you might consider is, and that's been fantastic. And I really appreciate that, Director Todd.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mike. Thanks for everything. Thank you for your service to this city and for what you've taught me is a level of detail I didn't think one could reach. You showed me that there's no shortcuts. You appointed me to the Parks Board back in two thousand and nine and have always been available, whether it's by email, by phone, immediately to, to keep the course and the direction moving forward. And I can't tell you how someone who is not detail oriented, how much I appreciated that in my life and the growth of my career. And it's a privilege to watch the evolution of your career. Thanks.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Todd. When I first got on the council, I wasn't with you for very long before you stepped into your new role, but you immediately took and sent me a whole list of resources for me to go to and things like AWC and look at this and check out this. You may want to take this class. And I really appreciated that when I was a new council member and just starting to, to get my feet wet. And you were always, remember, you would sit there and explain things to me like the, I still don't fully understand sometimes how the taxes work in, in great detail and write it all out or just anything really that I had a question about. You would just go into such detail and you still do that whenever I come up with something and I'm like, what happened with that? I, I know I can call you and you will give me a breadth of, of knowledge regarding that topic. And so I really appreciate that. And so we are honored to still have you here, even though you're not up here with us anymore. So at least we have you here for, for your knowledge and I appreciate that.
John, did you?
Thank you. I, I didn't have a button here to push to let you know. I would like to say a couple of words. You know, consistent with everyone else, when I first came on the council, Mike was the first one there to, to help me, to advise me, to give me, open up information opportunities to learn more about being a good council, council member. But you know, the other thing about you, Mike, it's not just limited to city council. You have touched this city in so many different ways with your, gosh, your involvement and your volunteerism. And some of you may not know this, but I knew Mike way before I ever came on council because he worked with my wife on Science Day for Mill Creek Elementary. I mean, Mike touches so many different people, so many different lives in this city. And Mike, it was an honor to be a council member next to you. It's an even greater honor to continue to work with you. But I thank you so much on behalf of myself personally, but also just what a role model you are to providing service to our community. Thank you. Thank you for all your volunteers and thank you for everything you've done.
We do a photo? So I'll pop down in front and present the proclamation.
The votes of your choice.
Do you want us in front of the table or behind the table? Okay, now we get to recognize Pam Pruitt. So this is a proclamation of the city of Mill Creek. Whereas Pam Pruitt, a Mill Creek community member since nineteen eighty, has served on the city council from nineteen eighty-eight through nineteen ninety-five and again from two thousand thirteen through two thousand twenty. And whereas she served as the first female mayor from nineteen ninety-two through nineteen ninety-three and two thousand thirteen through two thousand twenty. Whereas she served as the secretary for the first park board and served on the committee for the city of Mill Creek Study Group concerning whether or not to have a municipal court. And whereas during her first service as mayor, she worked with members of Congress and chiefs of staff to place a post office in Mill Creek. After several years of being on a waitlist, construction occurred in nineteen ninety-three and the post office opened in nineteen ninety-four. And whereas she supported the Mill Creek Police Department in the addition of the city's first K-9 unit. And whereas she has supported land use decisions and specializes in public safety by helping secure permanent funding for police radios and towers for not only the city of Mill Creek, but also for all Snohomish County and other city agencies and fire departments. And whereas most recently she helped secure six million in funding to repair Thirty-Fifth through working closely with State Senator Hobbs, former chair of the State Senate Transportation Committee. This project was paid, fully paid for without a city tax increase. And now therefore I Brian Holtzclaw, the mayor of the city of Mill Creek, on behalf of the members of the city council and the citizens of the community, do hereby thank you and honor you for your service to our great city. So just quickly, I mean, Pam and I worked pretty closely together for almost seven years while I was her deputy mayor Protem or mayor, deputy mayor. And I had the running joke when I would always be out on the phone and my wife would come out and, who are you on the phone? We spent a lot of time, talked through a lot of issues. I have to thank her. It was thanks to her and the late Fred, Fred Philbrook. If it weren't for them, I wouldn't be sitting here. For some, that might be a good thing. For some, maybe that's a bad thing, but they played a big part in my decision to get into politics and she was a mentor to me and not just the other council members. She came on council having been on council before. So she, she along with Mike and Donna and Mark and others all provided a lot of mentorship. And I thank her for everything that she did for the city. And you know, her last, I think lasting memory is that what the work she did to secure that funding, that was a big deal. It's a big project. We got rid of the last floating bridge in this, one of the floating bridges in the state of Washington. So thank you for your service, Pam. Appreciate it. Others? Go ahead, Vince.
Thanks, Mayor. Pam, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for the opportunity of all those years sitting beside you, allowing me to absorb the depth of knowledge that you've, you've had that just seems to have no bottom or no boundaries. You've been, you've been a city ambassador, you've been a friend, you've been a colleague, you've been all the above. And one of the things that I will never, ever forget, you helped me push Exploration Park over the finish line, which you knew meant a lot to me at that time, regardless of the cost. But we, we did get it done as a team and, and it is one of the highlights of our city. So thank you for that. Thank you for everything and thank you for all your service to the city.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Pam, for all your years of service. And, and I'm sorry that we're just now having time to get to this since COVID had everything shut down when you stepped down. I'm so glad we're beyond that point. I, I think you gave me tough love. And I, I do appreciate it because you, when I was brand new and you would take me and you would tell me to look at something and then you would explain to me why and you, you would explain to me the nuances of making sure that I am paying attention to other people that have done things and, and how to look at things in a way that I didn't know to do per se and who's come before me and to just really think of everybody in, in the picture. And I really appreciate that. And you always worked for the city tirelessly and you gave the city so much of your time and energy and that's really had an impact on things. And so I thank you and appreciate the lessons that, that you have taught me and the, the mentoring and advice that you gave when I was new on the council. And thank you for all your years of service.
Anyone else? Okay, John?
John. Thank you. I just want to say a couple of words. First of all, Pam, I'm sorry I can't be there in person because that's, we get so few chances to see each other, but I am so glad that we finally have the opportunity to recognize you. We didn't when you stepped down and now we do. You are the epitome of a public servant and you have been a great role model when I first got into this. It's not, it's all about politics. You gotta take some of it and roll with the other part of it and, and, and just what is amazing when I watched you was you just kept working. You kept at it. You never let anything derail you or, or cause you to just take it personally. You didn't do that. And I, I appreciated that. And I appreciated seeing that in you. And a lot of people here, you know, weren't around when we had some very tough times when I first came on council from a PR standpoint, a public employee standpoint. And you helped steer us through that and I appreciated that too. But most of all, thank you for being the role model of what a public servant looks like. You're not there for the photo opportunity. You're there to get the job done. And I really admire that about you. So thank you. And then, and I'm so grateful we get a chance to recognize you. But thank you for all you've done for this city.
Let's go back down for photo time, please. Okay, a few people at the gathering earlier spoke about the volunteerism in our city and it's certainly part of the lifeblood of Mill Creek. And so now we're going to recognize a few of our citizens who volunteer their time. This doesn't do them justice, given a piece of paper that's a certificate, but at least we can recognize them publicly. How should we do this? Because we have a number of people, one that's online. Should we do these one at a time and go down back and forth? Or should I go through them all and then we'll go down and take a series of pictures? Okay. So I'm just going to go through and identify who we're recognizing tonight for their service. And unfortunately Barb wasn't able to join us in person, but we'll be recognizing Barb. So I'm going to walk through. We're recognizing Tannis Goldbieski for her volunteer work with the Parks Board. Sally Dagna with the Citizen Patrol. George DeWitt with the Citizen Patrol. Barb Heidel with the Citizen Patrol and also and also Barb Heidel for serving as the Mill Creek Volunteer Coordinator. And last, but certainly not least, Nick Lewis for his services or Mill Creek Chaplain over the years. So why don't we all go down? And we'll do these in reverse order since I called them out. We'll go from last to first and they were the picture. Take a photo with the certificates. Someone can bring their iPad down.
I thought that was already. Okay, take a break or just move down.
Hey, while Councilmember Cavallari is filling his plate, we'll move to audience communication. Is there? I know we'll get to them. Is there anyone in chambers that'd like to address the council tonight? Sure. Seen none. Mr. Nelson, name, address in three minutes, please. You're still on mute. Joe, do we need to unmute him for our end or is it, there you go. Now you're unmuted.
God, I hope so.
We can hear you.
Okay, Will Nelson, one, four, nine, two, five, Twenty-Ninth Drive, Southeast Mill Creek, Washington. Took a look at the agenda tonight and I noticed your legislative agenda. I personally think it is a bit too long. I think if every community in the area went to the legislature with the list like you have, they would probably ignore everything. So I might suggest, if I can, that you narrow your list to two or three things that maybe the rest of the cities in the area want and two or three things that we want. Or any mixture of the above. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Anyone else like to address the council? Okay, seen a knot of heads. We'll move on. We have no old business tonight. So new business, Appointment of Arts and Beautification Board Members. Councilmember Allison.
My people.
Make sure those are them.
Okay. Last, last Friday, we had interviews for the Arts and Beautification Board. And we would like to recommend appointment to the board of, of two people. So a motion to appoint Catherine Nguyen and Stan Eisner to the vacant positions on the Arts and Beautification Board for a three-year term that would keep them there until October thirty-first of two thousand twenty-six. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Um, ye- yes, Mayor. Um, we, we, Councilmember Duque, Councilmember Allison and I interviewed Stan and Catherine. And I, we were very excited about both of them, what they have to bring to the table. We were very excited. They're wanting to volunteer. Stan's been a volunteer before for the city for a very long time. And Catherine is in college and bring, brings a unique perspective with a mechanical engineering background as well as a love of art to the mix. And so we were really excited that they're very good quality candidates and want to volunteer. And we think they can both combine. They will really add something to the Arts and Beautification Committee. And, and we were very excited and very fortunate to have them volunteer.
Councilmember Duque.
I won't, I won't repeat what Mayor Protem said. Very excited for the two that they're joining the Arts and Beautification Board. It's such an amazing committee and group. And I'm, I'm so excited to be able to see them together. But as a reminder, there's still one opening. So if you know anyone, there's a, a, please, please share. Because I think it's really important that we have a lot of different voices and distinct voices on all of our committees.
Any other discussion? Seen none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Councilmember Cavallari, did, where did he go? I think it was, I'm sorry, Councilmember. Councilmember Steckler, did he cast a vote? It don't appear he did. So I think we put that down as six zero. I'm not sure he would.
Did cast a vote. I, I agreed.
Okay, it was unanimous, seven zero. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Brings us to Strategic Consultant Contract Review. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you all are aware, council had the opportunity to listen to five different presentations over two different sessions. One on the twenty-seventh of June of this year, and the most recent on the September fifth. On the fifth, in the fifth council meeting, we had the opportunity to choose nineteen sixty-one consulting. On the fifth, in the fifth council meeting, we had the opportunity to choose 1961 Consulting to help guide the city in developing a long-term strategy. So in your packets, there's a statement of work. If you haven't had a chance to already see it, you'll get another bite at it throughout the course of the week. If you have questions or would like to discuss any edits. But this is the time now, if you want to put forward any discussion on the actual statement of work before we negotiate the contract with, or actually execute the contract with the consultant. The, on October 3rd, when we'll bring forward a resolution to approve the contract. So that'll be in the next, next week.
So the floor is open. If anyone had any questions, comments about the contract and the scope of work. We were planning to present it tonight to start discussion and, but not take action if we didn't want to until next week.
I had one question, Mayor.
Councilmember Bader.
So, City Manager, on page two, Overview of Work Objectives and Deliverables. The second bullet point is the creation of a three-to-five-year strategic plan that aligns focus, et cetera, when we go thing. But if I go through the deliverables as they're outlined, kind of in specific phases, I don't actually see that as a deliverable in any one of the phases. I don't know if that's an oversight or how we can ensure that that three-to-five-year plan is included in one of those outlined objectives or deliverables.
Okay, I'll definitely bring that up with the consultant. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Okay, I guess hearing none, we will bring it back on the, put it on the agenda for action next week. And in the meantime, if you do have any questions or comments, go ahead and forward them to the City Manager and we can discuss them next week as need be. Okay, we're moving right along. That brings us to the consent agenda tonight. I, what? Oh, I'm sorry. See, Will thought it was too long, so I just shortened it up. Legislative agenda, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Hold on, I am trying to pull it up real quick.
Is your mic on?
Sorry, I'm trying to pull it up. Thank you, Adrian. Maybe there it goes. Oh, thank you. I hear, I hear you, Will. So, and what you said about it being too long, but we had came up with these things for the legislative agenda. And this is just the draft and we gave it to, we sent it out. I only had put a couple tweaks on here. This is what we've come up with at this point and wanted to bring it to you to get some, some feedback and some thoughts on this. First, we put through some things after talking with city staff as well on some things that we would possibly be seeking, be interested in funding for. Obviously, any continuation of anything that we may need for DRCC. We did discuss possibly some funding for ADA accessibility studies for our parks and other areas in the city as well as lighting in the parks for public safety. That was something that we, we thought was important to maybe with things going on with possible vandalism that adding more lighting to the parks would probably be a good idea. And also, the state has given out money for electric vehicle stations. So really to take a look at this, we had a great discussion with Representative Berg on how they have money for this and how EV stations can actually drive economic growth and pull people into the city because when they're planning, if you're on the map, when they're planning their trips, it'll bring them somewhere where they can go to charge their vehicle. And if we have that here somewhere where they can just walk up to get food and shop, then it'll pull people in and help our businesses as well. So we had that on there and also support of funding for walkability and bikeability assessments. Regarding public safety, we have in here some things after we spoke with the chief as well to find out what he thought was important and then things that we thought were important. And one of the things we put in here is that we need continued clarification around vehicle pursuits with clarification around the ability for law enforcement to conduct effective and safe pursuits using a reasonable suspicion standard in specific circumstances such as auto theft and property crimes when there is an immediate threat to public safety. We thought that was very important to continue strive for clarification on that during the next session. Also, we want to continue the support for additional regional training centers for law enforcement so that we can get them hired and out on the street quicker. Thought that was important. And also support for policy that provides state funding to clean up public and private properties as a result of encampments. And we are already discussing that with Brett Berg. And so we think that's something that's important for us to have on here, to be pushing for money for that. Also, some really important things that have come to our awareness is the fact that jail service payments have doubled and that's costing us a lot. So we have in here a support for funding opportunities to offset increases in jail service payments. I want to, I think we need to tweak this a little bit because I had added in here. I'm going to jump down to this last bullet in here. Support for direct funding to offset city's cost for implementing Senate Bill 5536, which includes therapeutic courts, diversion programs, and the cost associated with switch from charges going from felony to misdemeanor. And the city is now responsible for costs instead of the state. I think, even though these are technically different, they are walking hand in hand because the fact that we used to have the charges for the drug bill was when it was a felony. So the state would pick it up, but now it's a misdemeanor, so we pay for it. And that means we're just paying more and it would be nice if they give us some money to help offset that since they're, they're the reason why we have this change. And then also continuing for crosswalk and sidewalk assessments. Particularly, we're thinking along 35th, we really need that crosswalk going over to the, I've got sanctuary stuck in my head now, and that's not what I want to call it, the Penny Creek Nature Preserve area. Right now, I do have it slightly vague on the land use because we don't know yet what bills they're going to be throwing at us. So with that in mind, I think it's very important that we keep in here that we are going to be striving to push for them to keep, respect our local discretion for accommodating density so that it's up to us and that they are not passing laws that are just going to tell us that we have to do things. And I don't know what those laws are going to be yet. So I know that's, so I am on top of that. I see Will on here. So Will, as we find out bills, we will be on top of those, but without knowing them, I can't put them in here yet. And also, it's really important that we, something that Director Todd had mentioned and also AWC was mentioning, is that they've given us all these new laws. It's really important. We think that we are asking them to give us a break and not make new laws in the midst of this until we have time to implement what the changes have already come down so that we can actually see where things are before they start changing up things because we're in the middle of our comprehensive plan. And also, the mayor had wanted me to add that we are going to need to see clarification on ambiguity regarding missing middle and ADU requirements. The public records reform, this is still just what we had last year pretty much. We just have put it in a paragraph form. I don't think that there's any appetite for them to make this happen for us, but I think it's really important for us to still be reminding them that we need this because we, we just want to make sure they're aware that they are putting in place that there are problems of potential misuse of public records reform and that they keep that in mind. And also, when it comes to transportation, we really want to focus on some studies for traffic impacts. That's really important for us as well as understanding that we, this is actually more of a county issue that we want to make sure that we are part of, at the table for the transit-oriented development requirements they are working on at the light rail station that's technically not in Mill Creek, but is just right up the road. And we want to be at that table. So that's important to us as well. And I think, is that it? So this is what we've come up with so far. I hear you, Will, that it is a lot. I do think the majority of it is extremely important, though. And then we wanted to see if there's anything that you all thought needs to be on here that we have missed. Or if there's anything on here that you don't like, that you want to speak up and mention so that we can go back and tweak it and then bring it back to, you voted on. Councilmember Steckler. Up, you're muted. Sorry, Mayor, I just started it, telling people to speak.
Give me a waiter.
Nope, go ahead.
Oh, okay. First of all, great job. I, I like the depth and breadth of it. I, I know in, in previous conversations with their legislators, this is what they've been asking for. Give me a list, make it specific, put everything down in writing. So I, I think what you've got here is, is great. I'm sure you had the discussion about the DRCC properties. And is there anything we can do without having a specific study we're waiting on to be done? Anything that we can't ask for? I, I seem to recall when, oh, I forget which city it was nearby us, that Silver Lake or somebody that got a huge allotment of cash for a civic center. And I know that was one of the items that we were looking at on DRCC. Is there any chance we could put some of these requests in? Because it could take years to complete them anyway, but at least we get the allotment from this calendar year and maybe get another allotment in the next calendar year. So is there any way for you to get any information on the DRCC study and be able to make any requests for that? That's my question.
Actually, we are in talks with Brett Berg constantly on getting more money for DRCC. And that's why I also left it kind of in there as, even though we got money last year, like right under a million. So yeah, like right, right at a million dollars. So to work on DRCC, so because we want, I left it in there so that we can keep as we come up with more things or there's something that they see that they could throw away, that we're, it's on there so that they know that we're still thinking about what else we might need. Because I kind of wanted to leave it on there as an open ending question in case we do come up with something else specifically we can request.
I might have missed it. Is it up further up in your, your, your proposal?
It is the very first one.
Okay, I must have missed that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that's, that's an important point. I think we're going to have to have some discussion of priorities because it's good to have these aspirations to get money. I'm not sure how much money is going to be doled out in this session where they're just doing adjustments to the budget. I think one thing that's time sensitive for us is getting this clarification on 1110. You know, when we found out that we're going to be subject to it and required to plan for two dwelling units for an acre, I think Director Todd and I thought, this is great. We already allow ADUs, so we've got it covered. Well, ADUs aren't part of the definition of middle housing. So we're required by that, where to accept to the neighborhoods to which this wouldn't apply. We would have to allow duplexes. I think we've heard from our constituents that we want the ability to decide. If we have to achieve two, fine, tell us that's what we have to achieve, but don't tell us how to get there. Let us pick and sort that out and determine whether cottage housing or duplexes or ADUs or what might be appropriate where. And I think that's very time sensitive because we have to have our comp plan done next year. So without some guidance from the legislature or not guidance, some modification to that law to clarify and give us the discretion that I think we all thought we were going to have. I think that should be one of our top priorities for next year. The other comment is I agree with both Will and John. I like the depth and breadth of this, but it is too long. I would suggest we refine the document as it is, but come up with a one pager. Just take each one of them, then one sentence or one long sentence and just have a one pager. And then if they want more detail, you've got a second document you can give them. But I think it would be helpful just to have a one-page talking sheet that you can hand out to that.
Yeah.
Right, right. But I think those are the, the main points that I had. I appreciate the work you guys put into putting this together.
Thank you, Mayor. Did anyone else have any?
Councilmember DK does.
Oh, sorry.
I really appreciate that feedback, Mayor Holt's call, because as we've been working on this committee and it's, it's been wonderful. We've been able to have, during our meetings, we've been able to speak with our representatives and, and have those conversations. And what, in, in regards to the document comment, I really appreciate that because we're also thinking about how do we best relay this information on the website for our residents? And so we have examples of like, they're more visually appealing documents, you know, more of that like a flyer, not printed or anything like that, but just something that to make it easier. We looked at others, you know, we looked at other cities to see how they have it. Some are just these massive PDFs with, you know, language, some are just memos. But we've been really thinking about how do we present this information to various audiences? And I think that's exactly what you're saying is this is what we need. This, what we're trying to do here is this is, we're trying to get that we're all on the same page and that we all agree these are our priorities. And then from there, we should work on a leave behind for when we're talking to our representatives. We should have something that's potentially more, you know, a PDF that's, you know, available on the website for our residents that when they want to know what we're working on or how that goes. And then, of course, having the full in-depth information as we're, we're continuing to talk about it. So I absolutely agree and I thank you for, for flagging that because I think that's really important.
Councilmember Cavalieri.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, committee. Thanks, team, for putting that, this together. And, and I don't mind the length. I, I mean, I know this is just simply a draft is, is what we're doing. It's just kind of maybe cherry pick what we have consensus on here. So I, I think I like the idea of the spaghetti on the wall mentality. So I think it works here. We'll, we'll figure it out in the next couple of weeks how we, for lack of a better term, dumb it down. But, but good job all around for, for getting this on there. Couple of questions, couple of topics I'll touch. And, and so it says, one of the topics talks about the increased cost of jail beds. And, and is that just since, are we using like a timeframe since 2019, 2020, when COVID first hit and there were jail restrictions and we just weren't booking? Is that the increase or gap that, that we're trying to address? Because I don't think we're booking more prisoners now than we were in, let's say, 2718. It's pretty darn close. I would say it's, it's more the increase from, from 2020 when COVID hit and there were restrictions on booking and they just simply weren't taking them.
Thank you, Councilmember Cavalieri, for thinking through that that way. The actual, the actual cost per bed has doubled. Like I think in the past year, Laurel's not, or Mina is here, or Mina can tell, but the actual cost per bed has doubled. And that's what I'm talking about.
So the boarding fees from the county has increased about 3%. But the, the, the number of days have also increased. So from 2020, it was right around 600 and that was a 12-month period. But now year to date, only about seven months, we're at over 900 days of boarding. So that's the one that is going to, we're expecting that cost to continue to go up.
And, and it's fair to say that, that, that cost increase is just basically time sensitive because we just simply weren't bringing people to jail at the same number like we, during COVID, like we are now. Things are, misdemeanors are being taken, warrants are being taken as opposed to back then. So there'll be an increase. All I'm trying to say is that there'll be, it'll seem like a substantial increase, but there's really not from normal business practices. And, and I just wanted to get that clear and make sure if we were asked. I, I appreciate the idea of asking the state for alternative monies and of course, help us house our offenders. But, but I, I don't think we've had that, that drastic increase in, in bed use in 2020. And 2021 wouldn't be a, a fair data point to, to utilize. DRCC, I think it would be tough for us to really ask money from the state at this point. I know they've given us some thus far for ask for anymore without any real clear vision or something on paper for them to look at to fund. So I, I certainly am with all of you. I like that as a top priority. But I did get consensus and, and then, then maybe make the pitch for some do re mi. And lastly, 1110, I happen to agree with the mayor. I think, I think there's, there's so many ambiguities with this here and, and there's so many questions left unanswered. As a legislator in my community, even I have difficulties understanding, do we qualify? Don't we qualify? Are we connected to a transportation hub? Does under 25,000, are you exempt? So clarification would certainly be important for the residents going forward, myself included. But good job, team, on the other side of the dais. Great job putting this together. Thank you.
Yes, yes, we're better.
Actually change, well, I have two questions. One on the, uh, on the booking. Numbers. Is, are there, maybe this is a, a question that can be answered later, but is it a greater number of bookings or greater length of stay per booking? And it would just be interesting to know. You're not, not a question for now, but just so we can kind of track how things are working.
I, I can give you a brief answer. It is actually both. There, there's going to be longer stays now, um, and I think the council member, uh, made a great comment as to far as to COVID. Um, and so some of those numbers are skewed. But we are seeing longer stays now, but it is also an increase in the booking fines or fees.
And then, um, as to the, uh, the, the clarifications on eleven ten. I, I wonder if, um, a short version of that is to get feedback from our legislators. On what eleven ten means. Is that, is that?
I think that's gonna depend on which one of the representatives and senators you asked that they thought they're voting on. There are so many iterations of the bill and so many changes that were flying around. I'm not sure they understood what it was. That was in the bill that they ultimately voted on.
So if, if we're worried about the ambiguity. And they can't help us with.
It's not an ambiguity. Right now, the law is written, we have to allow duplex, unless the neighborhood is. HOA with restrictions that preclude single family. We have to adjust our zoning to allow duplexes to meet our obligation to get two. Dwelling units per lot. So it's in my mind, it's seeking a change to that law to give us the discretion. As to which form of housing we can select or choose to get to that result.
I, I'm, I'm not gonna speak for everyone, but it sounds like many of us would very much agree with that.
Yeah, I think so.
And. In the meantime, because I doubt they're gonna change the law that quickly with. The comp plans coming up that we need to pass, can we get some sort of? Direction from the legislator, legislator, legislate. Um, our legislators. On how that would be enforced with this comp plan coming up because that's, that's obviously happening in sixteen months.
I think they've deferred that to Commerce. Commerce is supposed to be coming out with a model mi- missing middle ordinance for local jurisdictions in the next few months.
Would our ask be for our legislators to lobby the Commerce Department?
By the time that happens, the model, the model ordinance is gonna be published. I believe it's due to be published in early January sometime.
So what I'm hearing really is that whether they change their, whether we get them to change their minds in. In this next session is almost immaterial. If Commerce is gonna come out and give us a ruling.
Well, it's, it's not a ruling, it's a model ordinance. And so they're gonna follow the laws that's written now and the laws that's written now says we've got to allow duplexes. To meet our two dwelling units per, per lot. I mean, because the other, and the, the other thing we have to accommodate is a separate bill where there's ambiguity is on the one hand, we're told we have to allow duplexes, but then we're also. Supposed to provide for two accessory dwelling units per uni- or per, per lot as well, which that could be a. Basement unit in a house. It could be an attached dwelling unit built onto the back of a house. Or it could be a detached dwelling unit in the backyard of someone's house, but we're supposed to allow those and duplexes. So there's a little ambiguity and. What does that mean? But in terms of eleven ten, to me, it's pretty clear what we're obligated to do. And that's what I think the point we want to make is don't tell us how to get the two. Let us decide what's best for our community.
Again, I, I. Yeah, it feels like many of us agree to that, that position. It's. How do we get some resolution on that prior to finishing the comp plan? And it doesn't sound like changing legislation is gonna be the way to do that. Not, it won't happen in time.
Well, that's my point is if it doesn't change, then we're stuck allowing duplexes in to meet that obligation. That law has got to be changed to. Give local jurisdictions the discretion to choose. Which forms of middle housing they want to utilize to get to their required. Number of dwelling units per lot.
Or the Commerce Department comes back and says, hey, that's, takes that tack.
Well, no, Commerce isn't, Commerce isn't interpreting the law. The law is pretty clear on what it says. So there's not gonna, we know what Commerce is gonna say in the model ordinance. They're gonna say you have to allow duplexes.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah, it's not the, like I said, that's not the way we thought the law where it was heading when it was going through the sausage making process. We thought it was gonna give us the discretion to decide. How to get to that, not that it was gonna mandate you have to allow. Any form of missing middle housing as it's defined in eleven ten that gets you to your required number.
And is that for the legislative group? Is that what you're hearing from our representatives? They, they read that the same way the mayor's describing it?
I don't think they know. No, no, not, not the three of them. I don't think the legislators know.
Well, I, I, we, you may not, but I'm asking the folks that have been talking to them what, what their impression was.
Well, I, I just wanted to add, we have, um, besides our internal conversations where we're, where we've been going over our draft legislature and like flagging things for them. And I'll let, um, either of my teams, but we're also inviting them to still come to our meeting before the session. So then that's why we're trying to have this. You know, our, our legislative agenda so that we can, when they're here. Tell them exactly again what we're focused on. And then we ourselves can ask those specific questions on these. On these issues. It'll allow us also, as long as we're on the same page and how we phrase it, right? Since we're all in agreement with it about us reaching out to other. You know, um, cities, um, reaching out to other representatives to, to let them know we're partnering or whatever that might look like that, you know, that we go forward with. But we want to. With this agenda, with this, um, priorities, make sure we're all on the same page that allows us. To then go forth with your, I want to say blessing, but with that we're all on the same page and we can go out. And I see that Stekla has his hand up. I realize I don't know how long.
I think we're all on the same page. It's a matter of figuring out, working with April and. And Representative Donahue and Senator Lovick of how we go about making what the change is, whether it's guidance or an amendment to the statute.
I, I, I agreed. I just want, one last thing before, before, uh, uh, relieving the mic is. You know, there's, there's already been enough misinformation, some of it coming from this dais. That we need to be on the same page. On what we're asking our legislators to do. And I'll also say there's misinformation, or not misinformation. It says clearly eliminating ambiguity, and I'm hearing there's no ambiguity. So we need to be very clear about the language that we're using because it leaves our residents confused.
It depends on which bill. That's why it's hard to be specific. Without getting too far into the weeds because there's some of the bills, the interplay between different bills, there's ambiguities how they're gonna be applied. Within individual bills like eleven ten, there's changes that we, I think should be made. So. It's a little bit of both.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allison.
So perhaps we should have actually been a little bit more clear in that particular section of our legislative agenda. To specify that. You know, we would like to see the language in Senate Bill one, 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 zero. Clarify the city's autonomy or something. Uh, you know, we, that's what we were thinking of when we wrote that, but we didn't call out the specific bill, but. Uh, you know, if that really gets to the heart of what our. What our real concern is, is that that is crippling us from making our own planning decisions. And we'd like that language changed. We, we can make that edit, right? If that's.
Okay.
Helpful. I think it, yeah, after this discussion, I think it would be helpful.
John, is your hand back up or is it still up? Councilmember Decker.
Yeah, are you calling on me?
Yes.
In listening to this, it, it. Here, here's, here's, here's my concern or suggestion. I think that the legislators feel they've already given back to the cities. Um, that exception with, uh, HOAs and, and organizations and that. Any, any land not, uh, under such jurisdiction can. Ha, uh, these, these multiplex units can, uh, be allowed. So if we go back to them and say, we, we just, we just don't, we don't want it, they're gonna say, well, neither do the other cities, but we can't exempt you and. Expect them to hold the line. So we need to be somewhat. Creative here and how we go to our legislators and what we ask them for in regards to eleven ten. Either, you know, incorporate all of our other land areas under an HOA, which I don't think is feasible or. Or, you know, some other solutions, some other guidelines, because whatever they do for us, I would assume they're gonna have to do for others. Cities or they're gonna feel they have to. Otherwise, it's just not gonna get voted through. So I.
John's breaking. I, I actually don't think this is gonna be that controversial of a change. I mean, we're not required to plan for four, but cities that are, I assume would want to. The ability to choose whether or not they want to allow duplexes, triplexes, a combination of threeplexes and. ADUs, but they're being told you've got to allow fourplexes. So it's not rejecting the bill. It's not rejecting what we're being told we have to plan for. It's giving us the discretion to choose how we get there. That's what I'm, the clarification I'm suggesting that we push to the legislature. And maybe we won't, maybe we won't get it, but I think we should push for it.
No, I, I, I heard what you said. Yeah, we should push. My concern is I don't think our pushing is gonna be successful, so. Maybe we go back to them with a specific suggestion like. Only one of these, only ADUs is acceptable, uh, or you pick one of the four, something like that, that would be. Have a better chance of getting passed. Just. My, my thoughts on listening to this, we can't just go back and tell them we don't want it because they've heard that.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead. That's fine.
Were you finished or do you have another comment?
I'm done. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Cavalier.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I agree with most of the comments up here. I think that. All of us are saying the same exact thing. We want. The autonomy as city legislators to do our job to decide where this growth is gonna go. We wanna. We wanna understand, uh, the sausage making process, if you will, of where this number. Of, of growth was derived and how it was. Lumped into cities and, and can we get direct answers? Uh, cities under twenty-five K, are they exempt? Are there any caveats? And so I think it would be helpful to. Maybe have, uh. I think Clay White gave the last presentation last year. And he talked about this. We, we all knew this was coming. We've been talking about it for a year. Director Todd has, uh. Been preaching about it from the podium, um, probably just as long. And so. We've all had our guard up and knew that this could be, this could be thrust upon us and here it is. And so now everybody's scrambling for a life raft. I get it. Uh, misinformation is because of this dais, not coming from the dais. I think we, to your point. I think we gave a mixed message out here when we published that study out there. And, um, I'll make a motion later because I, I'll read a message from a resident that asked that it be taken down who's one of the nineteen. So. I'll talk about that in a little bit, but. But let's just get some clarity. So everybody on the council even knows what we're talking about here. Thanks.
So do you have enough direction to make refinements? And do you want us to bring us back next week or in two weeks?
Yeah, I think, um. We have direction, we can make some refinements on, um, the language there. And I believe it was coming back October. Tenth, it's coming back in a couple of weeks. So I think it's two weeks. So, um, so that's, um. And then, okay, Councilmember Duque, wanna say something? And then I wanna wrap up with, with something about the lobbyist discussion before I turn it over.
Councilmember Duque.
But I want to just confirm what we're coming back with is this document, knowing that from this document, we will make. Other documents for audiences, right? Like, we're okay with this being the, the main one. And from there, you're okay with, uh. Any other changes that come to it in terms of formatting. Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Okay, um, and to wrap up, I just wanted to touch base that we've been really busy. We were tasked with. Um, looking at the possibility of hiring a lobbyist, um, for us. And, um, we have been researching and as a committee, we have reached out, um, to different mayors. Um, and council members in different districts such as Mount Lake Terrace, Snohomish, Bothell, um, Edmonds. Um, and we've had some really good conversations with, um, our counterparts and other cities. And what we have found is that many cities don't have lobbyists. And many cities do have lobbyists. And the ones that do, um, say that they more than pay for themselves in money. But it does seem that they're really excited that they more than pay for themselves in bringing federal funds in. And we kind of felt like. The cities that are like that were such as Bothell and Mount Lake Terrace, and they actually have. More transportation projects, if you will, that would bring in federal dollars than what we do. So. With this in mind and considering that it is a short session this year. The committee is recommending to you all for discussion that at this point, we do not move ahead with the lobbyist. Just at this time, because it is a short session, we do believe that we are advocating with our legislators. Um, and doing a really good job of advocating for us and bringing in funds. And, um. We would like a little more time, we think, um. To still keep it open to have this discussion at the next biennium. Because by then it'll be a new session and we can get some ducks in a row. And see a few more things, learn a few more things about federal dollars. And, um, keep doing the steps that we're doing. Where we're on the way to getting all our ducks in a row and, and having a better process. And, and by the next biennium, then perhaps it would be a better time to hire lobbyists, but at. This point, we are recommending that, that we wait. So, um, I can open that up. I guess for discussion, if anybody has any thoughts on that, but that was our recommendation at this point.
Works for me.
Perfect.
Any, any objections, any dissenting voices? Looks like you, we're all on the same page.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, I think that now brings us to the consent agenda. Uh, item eleven A, approval checks number six, six, five, one, four through six, six, five, six, H, six, eight and ACH wire transfers in the amount of. Two hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. The Audit Committee was Councilmembers Duque and Cavalier. Were there any exceptions?
No exception.
No exception.
And item B, payroll and benefit ACH payments in the amount of two hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred ninety. Eighty-five cents, any exceptions?
No exceptions.
No exception.
And count, city council meeting minutes of September fifth, two thousand twenty-three and September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes seven, zero. So Councilmember. Sticker's hand go up. Uh, reports, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, three reports, first one's about surplus items that we will be adding on consent for October third. Uh, these are items, uh, in total exceed the thousand dollars per. Mill Creek code that we have to bring forward to council. Uh, this does not include major items like vehicles and so forth. These are just public works. Small equipment items that, uh. Useful life is far, far past. So we'll bring that forward and on consent next week and you'll see a list of those items. Second is, uh, just, just quick, uh, fourth anniversary celebration wrap up. Um, thanks to everyone who joined. I think it was pretty successful. It's. Exciting to see after COVID and unfortunately the timing is after that point in time and. When, uh, we have an opportunity now to start, uh. Moving forward with our continued rebranding, you, from operational side, you'll see a lot of fortieth anniversary banners across our vehicles and. How we, um. The swag that's distributed through our events and so forth. So you'll see that for fortieth anniversary logo. Even on some social media, I believe as well. So, um, it's exciting time. What, what I remember is also, uh, the city highlights. Piece that I, that I wrote up, uh, for, uh, this past quarter. Um, it was interesting to read the Garhards publication that they put out regarding. The history of, uh, Mill Creek and. The three individuals, uh, Frederick. Frederick Shaw Neville, Garhart and Elmer Kearns. Those are the three that actually, uh, purchased land. Um, prior to the, um. The more, uh, recent two corporations that actually built the golf course. And then, uh, fast forward to nineteen eighty-three when. Mill Creek reached that three thousand threshold that allowed them to incorporate. Uh, just a lot of interesting facts that I, that I, I found, uh. Uh, fun to read, uh, in that publication. So I just wanted to bring that up. Uh, the last thing is I, we did get an email of the mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and myself from. Commercewoman Del Benny's office regarding the potential. And they say likely shut down over in DC this week. Uh, should there not be a short-term plan? Uh, to finance, uh, she wanted to make sure that the city of Mill Creek. Um, if there was any, um. Uh, short-term impacts that the, the office would provide various resources to help move things forward. Um, there are nothing as it pertains to grants that the city of Mill Creek has or even, um. There are no permitting, um, stalls, uh. Um, by the federal government that would impact our ability to move forward. So, uh, we're free and clear of, of. Of that. So I just wanted to make sure council knew that. And those are my reports, reports. Thank you.
That bring us to financial.
And next is our financial report by our finance director.
Um, thank you, City Manager Yamamoto.
Um, thank you, City Manager Yamamoto. Good evening, Council. I am pleased to present to you the, um. August twenty twenty-three financial reports that have been reviewed by the Finance Committee. And I'm, I thank you for their feedback. Um, so, um, going through our economic indicators for that, for the, for the period, the consumer price index. The national average is now at three point seven, up by half a percent from July twenty twenty-three. Um, the Seattle metro area is now at five point four percent, again trending above the national average. And this is point eight percent compared to the June twenty twenty-three rate. Um, all items less the food and energy index grew by about four point three percent, largely from shelter and lower vehicle insurance costs. Um. According to the, um, Economic Revenue Forecast Council. The Washington State's unemployment rate has continued to grow to trend down. It's at three point six percent in August from, uh, three point eight percent in June, in June. And our housing construction has started to decline or to slow down rather with, um, Seattle home app. Home sale prices have also stopped declining. Is that eight point eight percent from the, uh, twelve months ago? The federal funds rate, um. Is, is at five point twenty-five to five point five percent. This remained unchanged from their, um, last meeting. And now, um, as a reminder, the benchmark through the period is at thirty-three percent of our budget. Our general fund, um, we added about half a million in resources. Our revenue came in right around. The benchmark at seven point seven million. Um, if you refer to stamp page sixty of the packet. You'll see that the, um. Revenues, certain revenue sources are below the benchmark and those are the property taxes, which I'll discuss in a minute. Um, the licenses and permits, charges for goods and services and fines and, um, penalties. The property tax collection is below the benchmark, um, at two point three million. This is about twenty, twenty-seven percent. And this represents about fifty percent of the city's twenty twenty-three levy. Our next big, uh, receipt of the property sales tax will be around, um, October or November. Um, our regular sales, um, tax revenue is a two point seven million. This includes remittances from the July twenty twenty-three sales activity. Um, and it represents about seventy-two percent of the three point seven million, um, budget for twenty twenty-three. Um, that graph or the, um. The, the worksheets are on stamp page eighty-three and eighty-four of your packets. Um, year over year, uh, we grew about hundred and twenty-four percent, excuse me, hundred and twenty-four thousand or four point seventy-five. Um, and that's mostly from retail trade and accommodations and food services categories. And then month over month comparison, we have about twelve point four, excuse me, twelve thousand four hundred and forty-four. Or three point twenty-nine percent higher than the prior year. And again, these increases are consistent with the year-over-year categories. That are in retail trade and, uh, accommodation and food services. Um, our intergovernmental revenues, uh, is at five hundred and thirty-eight thousand or sixty percent of the budget. And this reflects the receipt from the annual PUD privilege tax of about ninety-four thousand dollars. And two quarters of the liquor excise tax and the liquor control board profits, which we get. Um, the allocation is based on population. That's about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. And also grant reimbursements from the State Department of Commerce for the GMA update. And middle housing, that's about two hundred and twelve thousand. And our miscellaneous revenues, um, posted three hundred and, three hundred and thirty-three thousand or ninety-six point five percent. Above our budget. Um, and the overages here offsets some of the, um, shortfalls in the four categories that I mentioned earlier. Um, the, uh, local government investment pool earnings is at five point thirty-five percent. Compared to only two point twenty-five percent from August of twenty twenty-two. Um, looking over at our general fund revenue, if you would refer to stamp page seventy-three, this provides a graph. Of the, um. Primary categories. We have spent about seven point two million through the period and that is below, uh, the thirty-three percent benchmark. Majority of the cap, majority of this expenses about, um. Four point, four, four point five million or sixty-two point five percent is from salary costs. And the rest, uh, emit us from maintenance and operations, about two point seven million. Of which one point eight are for contract services. And our, um, legal expenses are about, um, six hundred and eight thousand, which is about, it's. Higher than the benchmark at thirty-seven point seventy-five percent. And this is primarily from the, um. Legal fees related to the, um. Uh, public records request lawsuits, which we've already settled. Um, looking, um, going back to stamp page three of your, excuse me, stamp page. Seventy-three. The, um. Departmental expenditures, uh, specifically the information technology, human resources, non-departmental. And community development are all above the benchmark and primarily because of, as we've reported before, these, um. Departments includes the one-time, the annual payments for, um, premiums as well as software and some legal expenses. Um. For our other, for our other funds, the special revenues and debt services, we have, I have no notable, um, variances to report. Um, for the art capital projects fund. Um, the significant variances are as follows. Our REIT, excuse, or real estate excise, um, tax fund revenues, they continue to lag. Um, through August, um, it's only added about a ninety thousand to our year-to-date receipts. Of seven hundred and sixteen thousand, which is only about twenty, under twenty percent of our budget for twenty twenty-three. Although the investment, um, allocated to this fund has grown. About a hundred and sixty percent of the budget. But of course, it's not sufficient to cover the shortfall in our REIT revenue. Our, um, capital improvement fund revenue. Shows a hundred and sixty-eight percent above the budget and this is again largely from our investment returns. And then our road improvement fund revenues posted three hundred and forty-six thousand, about sixty-nine percent of the biennium. Um, and the receipts, this receipt includes, uh, the final reimbursement from the State, um, Department of Commerce from the Mill Creek Subarea brand. About seventy-eight thousand. We also received mitigation fees from HR Horton, um, for the Ironwood Development. That's about forty-four thousand. And the rest, uh, is from interest, um, investments. Uh, that concludes the financial reports. Um, the other thing that I'd like to, um. Uh, report or give you a heads up is that next, uh. Council meeting on October third, we're going to be, uh, kicking off the, um, mid-biennium, um. Review and modification. So just to give you a heads up that that's coming to you.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Cavalry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I'll get you, John, next.
Finance manager, uh, did you say that, uh, housing sales were up eight point eight percent from last year?
Um, no, so that eight point eight percent is the price decrease from last year. The average home sales price in Seattle area.
Okay, thank you. I, I misheard. Thank you.
Councilmember Stekler.
Suggestion or thought for, uh, city manager, um. I, I was thinking about our fortieth anniversary. Maybe we're already planning this. We weren't talking about it, but. It seems like a great opportunity to create some community involvement and maybe some, uh, clothing. Uh, hats, coats, shirts that commemorate the fortieth anniversary of, uh, Mill Creek. Uh, I know other cities have done something like this and the citizens really love to get the, the product to show their pride in their community. And also we may even be able to use the profits from the clothing sales. To purchase some commemorative artwork or, uh, sculpture or something to, to celebrate our forty years. As, as purchased by the citizens of Mill Creek through their, their support of the, uh, the new branding and, and the fortieth anniversary. Is that something you've got in the works or something you've thought about?
That I do not know, Councilmember Stekler. So we can look into, uh, we are ordering apparel for staff. Um, certain pieces that, uh. That are on our list of to-do, uh, we could look into the fourth anniversary as well.
It would be great if we could open this up to the public. Maybe it's a different piece of clothing that. If you're afraid of it, you know, misidentifying them as a member of the. City Council or some of the other concerns, but just a piece of clothing that they could celebrate their city and, uh, fortieth anniversary of their city.
We'll put it on our list and we'll, uh, talk to our marketing communications to consider it then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other reports, city manager?
One more report, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, we have our HR manager that would like to report on our remaining positions that we filled.
Yes, good evening, Council. Um, I wanted just to let you know that we, I did report to you last city council meeting. That we had our offer letters, um, signed from our engineering department. And I'm happy to say that they're actually here in-house. Um, so our city engineer, Dan Carmody. Has, uh, began here. He's been here a couple of weeks. Um, and we have our two project engineers that also started Robert Bean and Miriam Soltani. I think, uh, a few of you have met them. We're really happy to have them on board. Um, so. We're, we're doing a lot on the onboarding and just making sure that the process for new hires, that they have a really good experience. Here at Mill Creek. I did want to just report to all of you, we had an impromptu kind of, uh. Appreciation barbecue for our, our employees. Just last Friday was the last day of summer. And, uh, we had a really great turnout. There was like thirty-one employees that came. Um, and a lot of, uh, staff were saying to me, oh, that was a great turnout, Naomi. You know, we had police officers that was able to. Um, introduce police officers that other staff have not, um, really met before, as well as our new, uh, hires. So we are chipping away at changing the culture, one by one, um, one day at a time, one moment at a time. And I wanted to let you know that this recognition event for our volunteers was part of that with the recognition, uh, committee. I've, I did not do this alone. It's really staff doing all this. HR can't change the culture. This is something that we embed. And that, uh, something that will have here lasting, even, uh, hopefully the intention is to have it even. After we're all gone, right? That we continue this kind of, um, uphill, um, thread of. Uh, thriving. So happy fortieth anniversary to Mill Creek. Thanks, everyone. That's my report.
Thank you, Naomi.
No other reports, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, I've got a number of items to cover briefly. Uh, we had a successful city chat at the library last Wednesday. I think we had ten or twelve people. Uh, the nice part was, I think, eight of them were high school students. Good to see the turnout of the young crowd again, but a lot of discussion of missing middle housing and, and homelessness and those related issues. Uh, we'll take the roadshow back to Cogier on Wednesday, November fifteenth for the next city chat. Um, I attended along with Councilmember Paddock and I don't think anyone else was there, the Snohomish South County Fire and Rescue. Promotion, retirement and promotion ceremony. This was the first time since COVID, since two thousand nineteen, they've been able to have this ceremony. Recognizing the retirements. And the promotions, I think there were six people who were, were recognized for their retirement over the last three years. And I think they had over fifty. Um, promotions over the last, uh, three years. So. It was good to, uh, attend that event. Had a very nice time at the Four Stitch Brewing Company ribbon cut, come, cutting. On Saturday afternoon after the South County Fire Event. Uh, very well attended, uh, the chamber did a great job putting that on. It is a lot of people there. Um, mayor's meeting, we had a mayor's meeting yesterday. One issue I wanted to bring up, um. We might want, interested in getting some, possibly some more information. Uh, Russell Witter, the mayor of Soltan, brought up that their. Uh, franchise agreement with Comcast, Comcast allows them to charge a peg fee, which is basically a charge on the Comcast bill. I think it amounts to about thirty cents a bill that, um, jurisdictions that utilize them, use them for supporting a public access TV channel. So the question he raised was, I don't know if ours even allows it, if it contemplates it, but what he was, he was bringing up. Whether or not some of the cities would be interested in possibly partnering with the county on using those fees to run some kind of joint. Public service station, uh. Some of the cities, Marysville and Arlington, use their own, but I don't think his thought was no one, uh, none, none of these cities are of the size. That could support their own station, but would it make sense to look into? Um, whether or not we should pool our resources with the county and some of the smaller cities in east, in, in East Snohomish County to use these peg fees to. Look into a way of supporting some public access, uh, television station to get some more information out. So. I'll kind of throw that out there for staff to look into what our franchise agreement allows for. I thought it's worth at least looking into, but, um. So that came out of that meeting yesterday. Um, and I guess the last thing I'll bring up, following up our study session with the, um. Parks Board a couple of weeks ago, um, Mayor Pro Tim, myself and Director Todd and the city manager and deputy city manager. Are working with Councilmember Mead. On putting together two, uh, requests for funding, uh, for the funds that he may have available for us. One would be. For Library Park in the amount of somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand. And the other would be a hundred thousand for North Creek Trail improvements. Um, we talked about how after the park board meeting, that the projects like the gate at Freedom Field. And the water fountains is probably something that's up more up the alley of the ARPA funds. But the, the bigger projects like Library Park and doing the improvements that the park board recommended and dealing with the drainage and. Setting it up where we can, might be able to get some state or federal dollars to look at expanding the, uh. The Veterans Monument, um, as part of a, a bigger project was a good use of those funds. And then, uh, Jared also liked the idea of the North Creek Trail improvements and how that can tie in with the Farm and Food Center at McCollum Park. Providing better access to that. So we're working with getting those requests in, uh, through him and his staff over the next few weeks. Um, so I just wanted to provide that update. And I. Think that's all I had. Um, bless you, Mayor Pro Tim. Any report tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to add on to, um, your report, um, that we, about our mayor chat, city chat. Um, at the library, uh, it was really fun to be able to go and get the library and, and see all the teenagers come out. And, um, the residents that came out have some really good discussion. And like the mayor said, we did have some good discussion on housing. Um, there were some questions on homelessness and also. A topic that came up that I think, um, is important and that's why I want to highlight it here. And I think it's something that the chief is trying to promote as well, is that if you, it's really important, everybody in the city realizes if you see something. That you, and you start to question, do, should I call the police? Just call the police. So I think it's, um. So many people sit there and think to themselves, well, I don't want to bother the police, just like they do with us sometimes, or, or should I really? I mean, that's what they're here for. They're here to figure out if that's something they should be handling or not. And, um, that discussion came up and we, we did address that and make sure that everybody knows, you know, if you, if you see something, if you think you see something, then just. Call. They'll come out and they'll check on it. That's what they're here for, to keep us safe. And, um, I just wanted to highlight that, that it's really important that, that everybody knows if you see something. Call the police. That's what, that's what they're here for. And so it's really important. And I've had discussions with, um, members in my neighborhood to that effect, effect as well. Just don't worry about it. Call them. That's what they're here for. They'll fi, they'll figure it out. So, um, I just wanted to highlight that, that we had that discussion. And it's really important to get that word out to everybody, um, and for all of us to be pushing that out to everyone when we talk to them. And, um, I also would like to add, um, regarding the employee appreciation, um. On the last day of summer, I happened to run through here, um, Friday, just by, just because, um. And I walked in, I just, everybody was just so happy and everybody just finished up having that lunch. And they were all in a good mood and they were all talking about how they just had their, their, had an appreciation lunch and everyone seemed so excited and. In a good mood and just thank you for, um, Naomi and city manager for, for working on things like that, that are really important. So the staff feels important and appreciated and those things go a long way. And I think that they really appreciated it and I could feel that energy when I walked into the room last Friday. So thank you for all that, to make sure everybody knows that they're appreciated. And that's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Cavalry.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. I also want to piggyback on the, uh, atta boys for everybody all the way around on the fortieth, um. Fortieth anniversary and, and especially the. fortieth anniversary and, and especially the recognition of, of some past employees or current employees that people who have served and, and done a lot for the city and asked very little in return. I, I think we should always be doing things like that. A couple of things I, I did want to see for future meetings. I would like to get an update on where the police contract is, is at. I know we had talked about it several months ago and I, I thought we were close to getting that wrapped up. So if we can somehow get an update, that would be great. And, and third is, is regarding what we have up on the website for the middle housing study. I know we talked about keeping that, those nineteen homes that were, they're kind of earmarked or or carved out, whatever you want to call it. I've heard from four different residents and just another one, just today as a matter of fact. And my hope is that we can have, I was going to do it as a motion, but I'm not going to do that. I'm hoping that we can have consensus. He is one of the nineteen homes in, I believe it's Aspen. And he has asked that we take it down and, and I, I wasn't sure. I said, well, it's transparency, that's what we talked about. And and his answer was it, it puts a cloud over my property at this point. I would respectfully ask that you take it down. So I'm going to ask the same thing. I, I think we can make this information accessible to the public. All they would have to do is ask for it, but I don't see the harm or any any damage inflicted by taking it down and maybe easing these persons, these people's burdens. Thank you.
Councilor Stekler, any report? Did you say no report? You're breaking up just a little bit. Councilmember Allison.
I just wanted to say I read that same article that our city manager read in the Mill Creek View this past week and you know, I have always appreciated the, the police services that we have here in our city. We don't have to wait as long as if you were in the county. And that was the first service that the city offered. So it's a cornerstone. But I just want to say thank you to everyone. The, the celebration tonight was great. It was great to have, you know, the old farm owner's family here and, you know, so thank you for the people who gathered up the group that showed up tonight. I'm sure it took a little bit of effort to reach out and get them to come in here and just thank you for, for hosting that. It was well done.
Councilmember J.K.
Thank you to staff for putting on that event and also for the swag items that are for the fortieth anniversary, including the bag, the water bottles, all those things that they had for residents. I'm, I'm sure, and for attendees. I know they've been handing out a party in the park, so it's nice to see that fortieth anniversary items.
Councilmember Paddock.
A couple of things. So again, congratulations on, to all the folks that were recognized with the proclamations and, and as everyone else has said, just a great event. Kudos to everyone for that. And congratulations to HR Director Fay for the new hires. Way to go. That's great getting those folks on board. It was a, it was a really terrific recognition of those folks that were promoted and were retired and whatnot. And councilmember, excuse me, county councilmember Make and Done was there as well. And it was just cool to be able to recognize these brave and dedicated individuals and, and actually cooler to watch their families come up and put the pins on them, their promotions. That was a really special thing. There, you should have on your table there, or it'll be added to the agenda, the planning commission liaison report. This was prepared by the, by the planning commission folks themselves. This is the official liaison report that you'll get after each one of their meetings here going forward. Just a couple of highlights that I do want to call out. The primary discussion was around review of the twenty twenty-four comp plan process. Timing, state requirements, new requirements with regard to tribal participation, climate resilience, securing community participation in that planning process was a big topic. It was Commissioner Matt Geiger's first meeting, so our, our first new planning commissioner in a while participated and contributed. His stormwater experience was very helpful. And there was also a presentation from the folks that, that Bedrosian property that's come in three or four times now with different options. We had asked for clarification on a few things like parking, excuse me. The council had asked for three or four thing, clarifications around parking and, and traffic. They presented that to the planning commission. That will come back to us either next meeting or the meeting thereafter. So that was what happened in the, in the planning commission yesterday, or sorry, last week. That's it.
Hey, audience communication. No one here in the audience, anyone online? I've seen a knot of heads. Okay, we are going to recess to executive session, discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW forty-two point three zero point one, what subsection one told, we're going to need thirty minutes. I assume no action will be taken. No action will be taken as the conclusion of the executive session. So it is seven thirty-seven, so we'll be in executive session till eight ten. So we've got a little bit of potty break time.
Naomi, if you're still on the call, how do I get into the executive conference room?
We're going to create the breakout room for you, okay? And you and the executive conference room will be in the breakout. Just stand by.
Standing by.
At eight ten, without objection, council extended the executive session until eight fifteen.
At eight ten, without objection, council extended the executive session until eight fifteen.
At eight ten without objection council extended the executive session until eight fifteen.
Yeah, need a few more of you to come sit down.
We need one more.
We're lost.
Come on, come on council members. Council members, council members. Come on stupid stuff. Come out here. Come out here. We just need people out here. Okay, there's enough of us now.
Okay, it is eight thirteen. The council has concluded its executive section session, no action is being taken and we will adjourn the meeting and reconvene next week. Good to see you, John.
Night, John.
Night everybody.